Intergovernmental Affairs to give my views on healthcare legislation. And I support the healthcare legislation for multiple reasons, of which I am sure you are all aware. I think it's essential for this country to provide healthcare for all of its citizens. So that is my public statement on that topic. City Manager, do you have announcements and presentations?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. We have several. First, I'd like to ask Marty Lyons, our Assistant City Manager, to come up. As you know, property tax bills have hit the mailboxes of our community, and there've been lots of questions about the property tax levy, especially the levies associated with the city of Evanston. So I've asked Marty to talk briefly about the levies and provide a bit of additional information for members of the community. Mr. Lyons?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Manager, Members of the Council. We have had, in recent weeks, several communications in the press, as well as our own items on the agenda regarding our tax levy. Under separate cover, you've received a communication regarding our levy. And in discussing that, we referenced that we went through what happened with the school levy, what happened with our own levy, and how that all came through to fruition during this most recent tax bill, which just came out a little bit late. So it would appear that even though we did our budget process in February with no increase in our budget, that that didn't come through in this tax bill. And in effect, that would not show up because it was in our budget this year. It's in our levy that's going to be done this evening. It wouldn't show up until a year from this December, when tax bills are out. So this, combined with some news about assessments, produced all of the press regarding eight to 11 percent increases in tax bills. So again, in your pack of tonight, we have the discussion of the tax levy, as well as the memorandum that you received separately on this. And I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the timing of our tax levy process. It's also outlined for you in the Manager's 90-Day Report, so I don't want to duplicate that discussion regarding tax levy in fiscal year.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to ask Avon DeThomas, our Director of Health and Human Services, to come up and give a report about our very successful H1N1 public clinic we held this Saturday and other information. Avon?
Thank you. Evanston Health and Human Services Department implemented the first-ever mass H1N1 vaccination clinics. We completed school-based clinics at District 65, private schools, daycare centers, and our first community clinic this past weekend at Evanston Township High School. With the assistance of dedicated health and human service staff taking the lead, partnering with our very own police, fire, emergency management, community emergency response teams, or CERT, and a host of volunteers, we're proud to report vaccinating a total of 4,157 constituents in a total of six days. But there's still more to do. We are hosting nine school-based clinics between now and next Monday. And the school-based clinics include Evanston Township High School and their population. The locations are listed per day on our website. We've received only two shipments of vaccine, and we're working diligently to press the state of Illinois to ship more. Remember that until the vaccine is widely distributed, specific groups of people have been prioritized to receive H1N1 vaccine. These include pregnant women, people who live with or care for children younger than six months of age, healthcare and emergency medical service personnel, persons between the ages of six months and 24 years old, and people ages 24 through 64, who have a higher risk of H1N1 because of chronic health disorder or they're compromised in their immune systems. Each week, additional shipments will be received until there is enough H1N1 vaccine available to vaccinate anyone who wants to be vaccinated. When more vaccine becomes available, information about where to receive the vaccine will be posted on our website at www.cityofevanston.org/health, or you can call 847-866-2948. Preventing the flu as easy as one, two, three. One, get your seasonal flu shot. Two, get your H1N1 vaccine when it becomes available. And three, practice the three Cs: clean your hands, cover your cough, and contain yourself if you become ill. Again, information can be found at www.cityofevanston.org/health, or call 847-866-2948. Thank you.
Next, we have several community events coming up, and I'd like to ask our Director of Parks, Recreation, and Facilities and Forestry, Gainer, to come up and talk a little bit about the Veterans Day observance. And then, joining him on the holiday lighting ceremony will be Karen DeLuttre from downtown Evanston. But we'll start first with the Veterans Day celebration.
Thank you. Veterans Day ceremony will be held on Wednesday morning, November 11th, at Fountain Square. Assembly will begin at 10:00 a.m., followed by the ceremony at 10:30. There will be non-denominational reflection, singing, and remarks by leaders of local veterans' groups, including Evanston's American Legion Post 42, and our mayor will be there. Carolyn, I'm going to start on the Christmas tree lighting. The annual tree lighting ceremony kicks off the holiday season at 5:30 on Tuesday, November 24th, at Fountain Square. Come on up, Carolyn. This year, the holiday tree was donated by Evanston residents John and Jane Baylinden. And the crane that we are using to install the tree was donated by Senri Tree Service of Hawthorne Woods. The celebration includes holiday carols by the Music Institute of Chicago, and I'm going to let Carolyn finish my talking here.
Thank you, Doug. Also, the night of the tree lighting, we are asking people in the community to bring non-perishable food items to the reception that's going to be held at the Rotary International World Headquarters cafeteria, where they'll be serving hot beverages and cookies and things. But we are collecting canned good items for connections for the homeless as well. So we hope you'll join us. Do you want me to do my two others?
Sure.
Wally, yes, that I... Also, at your... Out by the front door is a flyer that we've produced that's being distributed throughout the community. And on the one side is about the holiday tree lighting; on the other side is about the free parking in downtown Evanston that the city council approved, and we thank you for doing that, starting Thanksgiving through the holidays. And that's after 5:00 on weekdays and free on Saturdays and Sundays. So these flyers are being distributed, along with posters, and also various advertising throughout the CTA, the Metro, and also all the newspaper publications through the holidays. Also, I just wanted, at your place setting, is we're inviting the community to come out for a ribbon cutting. We're starting something new at EVMARK, where we're welcoming new businesses, and Mayor Tisdale will be there to officiate on Friday, November 13th, at the Ultimate Chicken Bar at 1739 Sherman Avenue. And come and cut the ribbon and welcome a new business to town. Also, just wanted to let you know that the EVMARK Board of Directors' public meeting will be held on Thursday, November 19th, at 3:30 p.m. at the Evanston Public Library. And all the public is welcome. Thank you.
In addition to the holiday tree lighting, the menorah lighting will be held at 5:30 at Fountain Square. Rabbi Dove Hillen Klein will light the menorah on December 14th, again at Fountain Square. And the Kwanzaa celebration, the first day of Kwanzaa will be celebrated with a community gathering starting at 5:30 on Saturday, December 26th, at Fountain Square. And in addition to the traditional lighting, there will be music, song, and reflection. So those dates, we're all looking forward to having you out. Thank you.
Next, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I would like to just remind the community about our ongoing community budget process. We had a very successful first meeting on Saturday. Over 70 Evanston residents joined us for a budget workshop that lasted about four hours. We will be rebroadcasting the workshop on Channel 16, with the details on the rebroadcast coming soon. Also, the workshop, plus all the additional workshops, will be also available on the Internet. We would encourage people to go to our website, cityofevanston.org/budget, for further details. Our next community workshop is this Thursday evening, November 12th, beginning at 7:00 p.m. at the Robert Crown Center. And then, the following Tuesday evening, November 17th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Fleetwood Jordane Center, concluding here in this room on Monday, November 30th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. So again, if people are interested in following the process, we'd encourage them to look at our website, cityofevanston.org/budget. Madam Mayor, two additional items, if I may. You all received this evening t-shirts, "Live United" t-shirts. The city's United Way campaign kicked off this afternoon. We're hoping to involve all of our employees in raising money for United Way of the North Shore, and so you'll be hearing about that and seeing various events around city facilities over the next couple of weeks associated with that. So the "Live United" t-shirts that you've all received is the campaign slogan for the United Way campaign, so I hope you'll wear those around town. And then, the final report is regarding downtown zoning updates. As the council knows, you passed a downtown plan not all that long ago, and now that that plan has been passed and in place, there are zoning amendments that will be required in order to implement the plan. Dennis Marino, our interim Community Development Director, is here with an update on that process and the community notifications and additional discussion we'll be having here at the city council on this subject.
Thank you very much. First of all, let me indicate that the zoning committee of the Plan Commission this month has started working on recommendations, zoning recommendations, that were included in the downtown plan that was adopted in the first quarter of this year. Two meetings are upcoming here, November 11th and also November 18th. These meetings will be in Room 2200. In addition to that, zoning staff has worked with the Plan Commission to map out at least a tentative schedule that runs into February. There's quite a bit of work to be done in terms of looking at the zoning recommendations that were part of the plan. The way the process has worked is that the... After the city council adopted the downtown plan, the next step is for the Plan Commission and its zoning committee to then take a look at all the specific zoning recommendations. This is very similar to the process that was followed with the West Evanston Plan and also the Central Street Plan. The zoning committee of the Plan Commission then will make recommendations back to the Plan Commission regarding the zoning recommendations, and then the Plan Commission will in turn make recommendations back to the Planning and Development Committee, and that's anticipated to be in February or March. For the next Planning and Development Committee meeting, on the 23rd of this month, we will have a staff memorandum, detailed staff memorandum, explaining the process and also summarizing a number of the items that are being looked at as part of the recommendations that were in the plan. So at this point, the focus is on November 11th and November 18th. The meeting on the 11th is a number of preliminary issues and cleanup issues. The meeting on the November 18th date starts to move into looking at the text amendment for the proposed transitional districts. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my reports.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have any communications?
None at this time.
Next, City Manager, Special Order of Business.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. Here this evening with two specific items. One, dealing with a report to you regarding my first 90 days as your city manager. The second, continuing discussion regarding the goals that the city council set in this evening, asking that you discuss the goal regarding affordable housing. But first, if I may, I'd like to start with a report on my first 90 days as your city manager. I started on August 3rd of this year, and one of the things that I decided to do was to make my way and talk with all the employees, as well as make... Talk to as many community members about the city of Evanston. And I want to share with you some of the results of those conversations. I'd like to also share with you some of my initial observations about the organization, some next steps that I'm proposing, including a work plan for myself to implement some of those next steps. So I met with 19 different employee groups. I don't know that I had an opportunity to chat with every single one of our 900 employees, but certainly went around the organization and tried to chat meaningfully about a variety of different issues with our employees. In addition, I asked all of you to give me five, six, or seven folks to talk to, and that ended up being 197 people. So my math, 10 times 5 or 6, reached 197. So I'm proud to report that I've talked to over 90 of those 197 community members, and will continue working my way through that list. And what I did is I've asked the employee groups and the community members five questions: what they think is good about the city of Evanston, and specifically with our employees, what's good about working for the city, what's bad about the city, or what's bad about working for the city, what obstacles are in our way to provide good service to our residents, what opportunities are we missing? And specifically for our employees, how best to recognize their achievements? So in what's good, and this is all the answers primarily from employees, I'll come back to you perhaps in another evening, once I've made my way through the 197 community members. But from the 19 employee groups I talked to, they all felt very good about the diversity of our workforce, the opportunity to work with talented fellow staff members, the opportunity to serve the community. And many actually use these words, that Evanston's an exciting place to work. I don't know that I've ever worked somewhere in my 20 years of local government where employees actually say it's an exciting place to work. But I heard this all over the city of Evanston, that it is an exciting place to work, that it's enjoyable to work here, that we provide good professional experience for folks who are looking to improve themselves and work through the various municipal professions, that there are a variety of challenges offered by working for the city of Evanston, and that people feel that we have good salary and benefits. But when there's good, there's also bad, and things I heard from... And this is really a compilation of the most common things that I heard, is that it often takes too long to get things done, that the condition of our city offices, work, and training facilities are not adequate, that residents and fellow staff members do not understand what each department does. And it's interesting in talking to our employees, really without exception, they all feel that people in fellow departments do a good job, but they also feel that they are misunderstood as to what they do, and that the residents don't understand what's done in specific departments. There's a concern about not sufficient employment and training. There's concern about a constant battle with the budget, and everyone hoping that the budget would be stabilized. Really, I think people, while they're always concerned about their jobs, I think people are just looking for more certainty as we move forward, regardless of what that ultimate impact would be. There's concern around regarding technology and equipment, that people feel they don't have the tools that they need to do their job. There's concern that all staff members are not treated equally, and that there's little accountability among our staff members. And again, that's something I heard really citywide. There's concern that the organization is micromanaged, and it's micromanaged really at all levels, starting with city management, including the city council, including managers and supervisors. I think there's a feeling that we should set out a work plan for ourselves, goals for ourselves, and really let the individual organizations within the city work to move forward. And there's also a feeling among our staff that their work is not always as supported and valued as they would like it to be. What obstacles are in our way? Our employees feel the budget challenges again. How can we move past them to serve our residents? That there's too much bureaucracy in this organization, that it takes too long and too many procedures, forms, to get things done. And there's concern that there aren't priorities, and that everything we do is of equal importance, so it makes getting things done difficult when there are no priorities. What opportunities are being missed? Concerned about our better relationship with Northwestern University. I think our employees see a lot of benefit to working more closely with Northwestern. Certainly, the fire truck was very well received, as I went around, starting at the end of August. Many people feel we don't make good use of volunteers. And as you look at how we use volunteers primarily with boards and commissions, but if you look deeper into the organization, we don't make good use of our residents, our very talented residents, as volunteers, and what can we do to better do that? I think there's also concern that we've not done a good job in recent years on economic development activities. And also, I think there's interest in the Lakefront and leveraging that for greater economic benefit. Certainly, the council has raised this issue as well, and that's something that's on your agenda, actually, for your special meeting next Monday evening, to talk about issues regarding the Lakefront. How to recognize achievement? Again, I think everyone feels that there's not enough recognition going on. There should be more regular recognition, but very clearly no more coffee mugs, or t-shirts, or baseball caps. So we'll look at making simple thank yous, and also, people feel it's important that that recognition be shared with all staff in the community. Again, one of the challenges is that people don't understand all that we do within our various departments, and so if we would share the positives with staff in the community, I think people feel that that would be a positive reinforcement of the work that they do, but it also would help inform people both inside the organization and in the community of the good work that we do. My observations: working for the city of Evanston is great. The quality and dedication of our staff members is truly outstanding. The breadth and the depth of work that our staff does is really very impressive, and I think you would be hard-pressed, not only here in the Chicago area, but really anywhere in the United States, to find a collection of staff members that are so diverse and so dedicated to the work that they do. Equally, the members of the Evanston community are passionate about the city. The 70, 80-odd folks that I've had an opportunity to have breakfast, lunch, coffee with over the last three months are extraordinarily well-informed. It's even interesting, Mayor Tisdale and I were in Springfield a couple of weeks ago, and the mayor of Willmet was with us, and he knew as much about what was going on in the city of Evanston as anyone I talked to in Evanston. So not only are the residents of Evanston very plugged in, but also our neighbors are very plugged in and passionate about what we're doing. Again, talked about the breadth and depths of services. Unfortunately, though, I don't think the city's very customer-friendly. While I think our employees try to do everything they can to give people what they need, I think that we don't do as good a job as we should for providing simple information as far as helping citizens with requesting services, working on development land use services, and really making payments to us of any and all kinds. The format of city council meetings, in my humble opinion, do not make the best use of anyone's time. The members of the public, elected officials, or staff, and would hope that we can talk more about how to make these meetings a better use of everyone's time. The process of setting property tax rates is not in sync with the budget process, which provides confusion on many levels. This evening on your agenda is setting property tax rates. For next year, you will not consider a budget for another two months. My hope is that perhaps we can talk about making changes in that area as well. The staff does not provide sufficient tools to the mayor and the aldermen to do their jobs as policymakers. You all are very engaged, and I think that there are opportunities that we can work to make you more effective in the jobs that you do. As I mentioned, the mayor and I have spent some time the last couple of weeks, both in Washington and Springfield, and it's clear that the city of Evanston needs to spend much greater focus on intergovernmental relations. That's not only in the capitals, but in our regional partners here in northern Illinois, and I would hope that we can do some... Make some focus on that in the coming weeks. Also, in the area of economic development, again, I think the council has already identified this as part of your goals, and I would hope that we can continue to put a greater focus on economic development. Citywide parking regulation policies present many challenges to the city, our residents and visitors, which I believe need to be reviewed. Difficult issue, the revenue's important to us, but I think it engenders an extraordinary amount of bad will. I have gotten more communications from residents and visitors about parking than I have any single issue since I've become city manager, and I think that there are ways that we can address that that still meets the needs of the community and the council, but hopefully would not be as onerous in the eyes of many of our residents and visitors. So next steps. With all this information, what would I like to do with it? Well, first of all, I'd like to address the role of the Assistant City Manager. Marty Lyons has been serving in that role and as the role as your Finance Director over the last several months. My sense in talking with Marty is that's not something that we can continue to do. And so I've asked Marty basically to choose between being Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, and he has chosen to be Assistant City Manager. So as part of this budget process, I'm going to look at ways to reorganize our administrative services for the city, and we'll bring back some recommendations to you from that. Also, Marty has had some departments reporting directly to him. I've made an adjustment so that all city departments will now report to me directly. Marty will continue to serve as sort of a macro chief operating officer for the city and help you and myself with long-range planning, budget, and capital needs. The issue of sustainability, Carolyn Colapi, our sustainability coordinator, has recently returned from her paternity leave, and I have moved her back into the city manager's office from the Public Works Department. I think it's important that we retain a citywide focus on the area of sustainability. In the area of communications, I'm very proud of the work that we've been able to do in a relatively short period between the blog that I'm keeping, our YouTube channel, we're on Twitter, we're on Facebook. Hopefully, we're doing a better job of communicating with our residents in lots of different ways. With all that said, though, I think that there are some specific issues that would be important for me to focus on over the next year. First is to implement the city council's goals. I want to thank you again publicly for sitting down in September and coming up with 12 goals for the city. I consider it my number-one priority to help you implement those 12 goals. In the area of city council efficiency and effectiveness, I would like to work to help you make you more efficient and effective, and I think that's to help you address the time spent with the city council meetings, the role of the council committees. I think there are also areas where we, as staff, are not using the city council as efficiently and effectively as we could. And those areas include property standards and economic development. You are very plugged into the community and your wards, and I think we are losing out by not making better use of your time and talents in some of those areas. So I would hope that we can talk more about that over the coming weeks. Celebrate, recognize, and value staff members and their achievements. I think we have some real issues in the organization in valuing the accomplishments and achievements of our staff, and we'll be working with the department directors over the next few weeks to come up with a plan that I think will make sense with an $8 million budget deficit. I'm not proposing cruises to the Caribbean for our employees, but I think that there are still lots of things we can do to recognize, celebrate, and value their achievements that don't cost a lot of money. The area of innovation, as I've talked to people, especially from outside of the community, about working and living in Evanston, people look to Evanston as being a very innovative place. And I think that the reality of that and the perception of that perhaps are not as equal as they should be. And I would hope that over the next coming years, we can continue to be looked at as an innovator, really in all the municipal services we provide. Communication's a very important part. As I've mentioned, I think we can do a much better job of receiving input from our residents as well as communicating to them. This is a phrase that's not mine, but other communities have looked at, this idea of 360-degree communication, where we are communicating with our residents and they are communicating to us. And as we are looking at the budget for 2010, 2011, it's one of my goals is to carve out some money so that we can look at that and perhaps make some serious adjustments as to how we do business in order to better communicate with and to our residents. And finally, the city council adopted a strategic plan not too long ago with, as part of its vision statement, was to create the most livable city in America. And certainly, we have lots of component parts to that. I think that we, as your staff, need to work more diligently in really connecting dots with the municipal services that we provide. You look at the breadth and the depth of services that we provide. I don't know that the best of all of them reach all of our communities, and that's in the area of recreation, library, health, economic development. One of my goals would be, if we're going to create the most livable city in America, it needs to be the most livable city for all of our residents. And I really want to rededicate ourselves as a staff to work on that in the coming months. So, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, that concludes my report on my first 90 days. I thank you for having me and my wife, Patrice, come out from California to be your city manager. We're having a great time, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Just a great... Thank you.
That concludes our Special Order of Business?
One more.
One more. Does not conclude our Special Order of Business.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, the second item under Special Order of Business is the city council's goal, dealing with affordable housing. Really, there are several component parts to this. This evening in committee, the Planning and Development Committee received a report from the city's Affordable Housing Task Force. In addition, your staff has identified some issues that we think are important for dealing with with affordable housing. So our hope this evening is to have a dialogue with you to get some next steps. So our hope this evening is to have a dialogue with you to get some next steps as to what you think is appropriate for us to move forward on the council's goal with affordable housing. The task force recommendation, so I can just run through them briefly, deal in the area of rental housing to encourage and implement activities that increase the number of rental units that are affordable for Evanston individuals and families with incomes below the area median income, including direct rental housing assistance. The area of foreclosures, to use current foreclosure crisis to invest in properties that can be retained as long-term affordable housing. The area of homeownership, to publicize, use, and build on existing successful housing programs. On the area of infrastructure, to implement redesign of city departments and nonprofit agencies related to affordable housing retention and production to make it more efficient, transparent, and proactive. Public education and awareness, to increase public knowledge about affordable housing, awareness of housing needs of Evanston residents and families, and the willingness to actively support housing needs. And finally, to continue to work to increase the public's concern and desire for support of affordable housing. So those were the main goals of the task force's report. In addition, staff has identified a couple of other items that we would hope that the council would consider, dealing with the rehabilitation of older housing stock, especially multifamily rental and affordable single-family units, the acquisition, rehabilitation, resale of vacant houses, enabling moderate-income and lower-middle-income existing Evanston households to purchase housing, the expansion of the city's successful housing programs, the single-family rehab program, down payment assistance to approve the existing housing stock, increasing the supply and quality of affordable rental housing principally for Evanston residents, the construction of infill housing in West Evanston, construction of new housing on Howard Street as part of revitalization strategy, creating new models of successful mixed-income housing, and developing new housing in West Evanston consistent with the NSP-2 proposal. Continued collaboration with counseling agencies, continuation of Families in Transition Program, and to make more effective use of state housing financing programs available through the state of Illinois. So you have before you the task force report, you have before you some ideas from staff. We would ask this evening for a brief general council discussion to get some direction as to where you believe the next steps are in this area. My recommendation to you would be to direct staff to return with a draft work plan that would combine looking at the recommendations of the Affordable Housing Task Force as well as some ideas from staff, and to have the council consider that draft work plan at your January 11th meeting or any other direction that you think is appropriate.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, city manager, I continue to be overwhelmed by your involvement, commitment, and participation, and it's very hard to follow anything that you do. But I would like to comment on going forward on the affordable housing issue. It is one of our goals. But instead of having our staff, we've just had a commission put together a proposal. Instead of having our staff come forward with a plan, how about if we have a special meeting so that those aldermen who are involved in issues having to do with housing and problems and issues and maintenance, et cetera, how about if we come up with a plan? I just, I just think that some of us out there are hearing things that are important to contribute to the overall plan. Instead of getting something all written up on fancy paper and, you know, done very nicely and having us react to it, perhaps we could have a council roundtable. Everybody else has talked about affordable housing, and we're always reacting. And I'd like us to initiate a discussion on affordable housing. There are problems in the various neighborhoods in our town, people struggling to keep their houses. We have evidence that some people failed to do that by virtue of the fact that we have over 100 vacant, foreclosed, or abandoned homes. And maybe if we had had a plan, we could have addressed some of those before they ended up in the mess they're in. So that's my idea.
Alderman Wilson?
I agree, I agree with Alderman Rainey. We could probably spend hours, just, you know, the nine of us talking about these issues, and we don't have hours right now. When you ask for the questions or comments, you know, a few broad strokes occur to me, but as far as getting into the details and a lot of the specifics, there are a lot of things I like in the plan and a lot of things I'd like to talk about further and more specifically, but it's probably not real practical to do it tonight if we don't stay until 2:00 in the morning.
Alderman Burris?
I actually echo Alderman Rainey and Alderman Wilson that a special meeting seems appropriate and to really get in depth of what the task force did. I know how much work that they put into it, and the recommendations are fabulous, and we really need to take time and look at what they did as well as what staff has presented to us. Not to start from scratch, but just to really say, okay, where are the things that we can get really behind, particularly in our budget circumstances? But do you believe that is a long discussion and almost more in a sort of a roundtable format? Sometimes it's hard, I think, to really get into the meat of things, even in this sort of setting.
Alderman John Baptiste?
The problem that I have in some of the approaches is, and I know you're brand-new, is that it seems that we approach some of these problems as if we're starting from scratch. I mean, what plans do we have already? We need to talk about, because we've been talking about affordable housing over a long period of time, particularly the foreclosure crisis. Who do we know that are in foreclosure? Are we in touch with them? Have we followed up, you know, with programs we have in place? We suppose we have those things from maybe six, seven, eight months ago. So I join, you know, the rest of those who have spoken in the call for a more intense discussion. But, you know, just like the economic development discussion, I was concerned that we were behaving as if we started from scratch, and, you know, we've been out here for a while, and we've had staff who have some expertise, who have given leadership in those areas. What do we have specific to build on that?
I see no more lights. The one thing I wanted to add to the discussion is I think that it may be a different discussion if we do get the grant than it will be if we don't get the grant. I don't want to hold the discussion until the federal government makes up its mind, but if there is a possibility to, I don't know if you know, that they will actually let us know in December?
That's the expectation, early December.
Early December.
But that could be revised, but.
Yes, it could. All right. I just think if, if they're going to let us know in early December, we might want to have the discussion in mid-December when we would actually know.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Rainey?
Could you explain what you're talking about? Because maybe people are here, I know a lot of housing people are here, they know exactly why, but maybe people in the television audience and even in this audience might not know what grant you're talking about.
Well, according to Senator Durbin, my voice quails when I say the actual amounts. I'm going to try to do it as if I actually expected all this money to come. We have applied for a grant from Housing and Urban Development as part of the stimulus package for $40 million that would, I saw your face. Don't do that to me. Doesn't help me do this. But they wanted large grant applications to make a significant difference in a community, and so we've applied for $40 million to buy foreclosed, boarded-up vacant properties and to rehab them and sell them for affordable housing or to keep them and maintain them as affordable rental. And that's what we're waiting to hear about. And Senator Durbin and Senator Burris and Congresswoman Shakowsky are all working to help us. Yes, city manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it sounds like you'd like to have a special meeting to talk about this. Would you like to schedule that this evening? You currently have a special meeting scheduled for the 7th of December and a regular meeting scheduled for the 14th of December.
Can, if it's, if we have, excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sorry, Alderman John Baptiste. I was trying to get my calendar.
Can we not, you know, schedule this item on the 7th as well?
At this point, the only other thing that you would have on the 7th is to receive the report from the community group that's working on the budget.
Yeah, so why can't we address, you know, affordable housing then?
We might not have heard from HUD.
No, but I don't know whether, are we, you suggesting that we wait to hear from HUD before we?
Well, no, I don't ever believe in waiting to hear from the federal government because you can spend a lifetime doing that, but if, if there was a question of scheduling the meeting at the end of November versus early December, it would seem to me that we might want to throw it into December on the off chance that we could have heard from them. But if there's a good November date, go ahead and take it.
I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting December 7th.
Okay.
That we get the report on the budget and we spend some time addressing affordable housing. Can we do that? I move that we do that.
I second.
Alderman Holmes? Do you want to speak to that?
Not to the date. I just wanted to say that I would also think that we should not overlook the idea of having some input from the staff as well, and if the staff could have that ready at, when we meet as the council, that would be helpful. We'll have the report from the task force, but also recommendations from the staff as well. I would like that input.
Thank you. Alderman Tandem?
Oh, thank you. I think when Alderman Rainey first started talking about this and Alderman Burris, it, the format appealed to me in that it was more, going to be a little more casual, a roundtable, a faster exchange of ideas, and I'm worried that having it in tandem with a scheduled meeting during which there was another agenda item is going to keep it at a more formal council level and not really have the more interactive and sort of comprehensive discussion that we could have at a separate time.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we have the meeting on the 7th. Seeing no further lights, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, the light went on a little.
All I was going to say is we canceled our rules committing, meeting that night at 6:00, so we could actually start earlier that night if we wanted to, to try to move everything in. Just more of a logistics thing, that was going to say.
I think this is not good parliamentary procedure, but we will now take the no votes. Opposed? All right, the ayes have.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, just so I'm clear on format then, so perhaps would you like to start that meeting at 6:00 o'clock?
Yes.
Sure.
And then what would you like as far as, would you like any kind of presentation on the subject, or would you just like to just have it open for discussion and have the computer to take notes as appropriate?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I want to know what we, what, you know, our staff has developed. We've been talking about this for eight, nine months, and then we could tear into whatever it is we want to put on the table to build on what's there or discarded, whatever. That's starting from scratch.
So, Madam Mayor, my understanding that you would like the staff to come up with a proposed strategy?
No, no, wait a minute. The staff has a strategy already, does it not?
And I guess what I'm saying, Alderman, John Baptiste, members of the council, is, in my opinion, as your city manager, we need to have a better strategy.
Okay, fine.
And so if you would like to just know what we're doing, we'd be happy to provide that. If you'd like our suggestions on how we can do it better, we're happy to provide that in addition to or instead of.
That's fine. Let's build on what we have, come with proposal, and then we could all weigh in.
All right. Do you have a clear understanding, city manager?
Yes, so we'll start at 6:00 PM with the budget. Start first with the budget and then affordable housing, or would you like the other way around?
Affordable housing.
All right, we'll start with affordable housing and then have the budget presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I think there was some hesitancy on the part of some citizens, given our past history with citizen participation in the budget process. And I don't want to place them second to anything this time. I mean, I think we all have a real expectation that they're going to come to us with meaningful ideas, and I just, I think they should be number one. If there's time.
You want to start the meeting with the budget? All right, let's try a vote. Would you like to make a motion?
I've had my say. I don't care when the meeting is, I just don't think we should do anything to impose on the Citizen Budget Committee. That's all I was saying.
Is it clear what you're saying? You want us to start the meeting with, dealing with the budget first, right?
If there's time left over, we'll talk about it.
Okay, fine. We don't have any opposition to that, right? I second that. Can we do that?
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, Mr. City Manager, do you have clear? Okay. Next order of business is citizen comment. And to speak on agenda items, I have Susan Cooney and Paul Selden.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. I'm representing Four Seasons Garden Club of Evanston.
I'm sorry, Susan, you have to give your address even though I have it here.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Susan Cooney at 1834 Wesley Avenue, Evanston, Illinois, and I'm here to speak about our Veterans Day memorial services. I wanted to remind you, on November 11th, in 2001, Four Seasons Garden Club in the city of Evanston dedicated a Blue Star Memorial Monument in Patriots Park to recognize all those who have served and are serving in our armed forces. Since daffodils is a language of flowers, and they say regard and respect, and after that dedication, Mayor Morton led all present in planting of daffodils at the Blue Star marker. Each year since, we've encouraged residents to plant daffodils on Veterans Day and think about what their service means to us when the bulbs bloom in May. On 11 November 2004, we dedicated a bench in Patriots Park honoring Alan Bo Price and his wife for their many years of loving service to the veterans and the young people of Evanston. Daffodils bloom next to his bench this year and every year since. In November, in 2007, we celebrated the rededication of the DAR memorial flagpole. We paid for, paid for twin oaks to be planted in the park to represent the city and the community working together. Bo urged us to remember and care, so we're inviting the city leaders and others to join us in planting of daffodils to remind all of us who serve and who have served our community in any capacity. And we have some daffodils we'll pass out to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Come on. Thank you. That's a hard act to follow, Paul.
Good evening. I'm Paul Selden, and I live at 1235 Maple, and I represent myself as a citizen tonight. Although, the first thing order of business, actually, as the executive director of Connections, I want to thank the city for actually using this tree lighting ceremony as an opportunity to collect canned goods for us. It's a wonderful gesture. ceremony as an opportunity to collect canned goods for us. It's a wonderful gesture. I, I put my name down tonight because I was going to try and make a comment on the ideas that you were going to express about affordable housing, but since that's been tabled, I don't have anything to comment on. So I'm going to say just a couple of words about the discussion that went on prior to this meeting at the PND. There were really two strategies that Alderman talked about at that meeting. One is getting Habitat for Humanity to come into Evanston, and the other is really talking about more of the down payment assistance for housing. And both of these strategies are really about homeownership and making affordable housing, or housing affordable to moderate income people who are getting priced out of the city. My comment is really one about asking you to think really about the other half of, of the Evanston population, which is really a rental population. And so I just want to briefly make a couple of points. You'll have to forgive me because I don't have, I had to write these up while I was listening, and so I don't have my figures in front of me, but I believe these are more or less accurate. Evanston has about 14,000 rental units, and about 7,000 of those, about 50% are paying more than 30% of their income for that housing. Now that means that half of the rental population in Evanston is exceeding what's called affordable housing, where affordability is usually defined as spending less than 30% of your income. In those 7,000 rent burdened households, there are probably 20,000 people living there. I guess my, my comment is that if you believe that inviting Habitat for Humanity to Evanston and, and getting an additional three or four units of, of down payment assistance will solve the problem that those 20,000 people have, then I think you've arrived at your strategy for how to deal with affordable housing. I don't happen to believe that, that that is, is a strategy, a workable strategy, that will in any way really assist what is an enormous problem. And I think that the task force tried very hard to consider both sides of the, of the problem, and to come up with appropriate strategies for dealing with both. But I just want to try to, to get you thinking also about the rental side of affordability. Obviously, I represent people who are homeless, and, you know, affordability, we're not even talking about that population. I'm really just concerned about really the rent burden population, which is significant in this town, and trying to do, to focus on a set of strategies that will, in fact, make housing more affordable. And that, and there are many strategies that are in fact laid out in the task force report, and I encourage you really to read them, study them, and understand them. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Citizen Comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Before I begin, I just want to alert the council to the fact that I'm removing the minutes from the last council meeting from the consent agenda, and will address them after I present the consent agenda. First item, the Administration Public Works Committee asks your approval for is the city of Evanston payroll through October 25, in the amount of $2,424,504.63. Next, we request you approve the bills through November 10, in the amount of $4,089,534.37. We request you approve the award of a contract for hydraulic modeling services for the Evanston Water Distribution System to MWH Americas for a three-year bid for $32,000 a year, not to exceed $96,000 for the three-year period. The two items following having to do with janitorial services for this building and other city buildings and police and fire has been removed from the council agenda by our staff, and we'll deal with it at another meeting. Next is approval of the Civic Center Committee's recommendation regarding the Lorraine H. Morton, official Lorraine H. Morton Civic Center project, and that is just simply a proposal from the Civic Center Committee, and it'll be referred now to staff to begin to develop the, the specifications for bids, and they'll be brought back to us. Next is approval of the lowest responsive and responsible proposal for purchase of auto body and collision repair services. Hopefully, we won't need any of them, but the light, medium, and heavy trucks in the amount of $68,175 is to be awarded to Sigler Auto Body in Skokie, if you approve, and the heavy fire apparatus equipment in the amount of $22,725 to Renewed Performance Inc. in Tipton, Indiana. We ask your approval for an award of contracts for 2009, 2010, winter snow towing. This is a contract where we have at the ready about 25 tow trucks, which we give a fee to to be ready in four hours' notice. Next, approval of change orders, well, I'm going to skip down to A5. Resolution 87R09 authorizes the city manager to execute a settlement agreement with scale construction, and that has to do with the water utility and renovation project that I'm going to mention next. Approval of two change orders, six and seven, for the Evanston Water Utility Expansion and Renovation, and that is to scale construction. Change order number six is in the amount of $12,378 for additional work and time, and the $75,000 settlement, which makes the total contract $2,625,338. Funding is provided by the Water Depreciation Improvement and Extension Account. Excuse me. Next, Resolution 73R09 authorizes the city manager to execute a local agency agreement and construction engineering services agreement for the Evanston Lakefront Corridor Reconstruction Project. This is a project totaling $1,786,880.45, of which there is a federal grant in the amount of $1,61,904.
Can we take that off the consent agenda?
Okay. That's been removed from the agenda, from the consent agenda, and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next for introduction is Ordinance 101009, amending the business regulation. This affects the Foreign Fire Tax Board and adds the fire chief as a member and one additional members. Otherwise, there are absolutely no changes. Next is Ordinance 107009, the 2009 City of Evanston tax levy. Ordinance 108009, the 2009 Special Service Downtown Area 4 tax levy. It's for introduction, for introduction also. It, oh, I need to take that off. I'm removing 109009, the township tax levy. Moving on to planning and development. For introduction is 105009, which rescinds Evanston landmark designation for the property located at 1819 Dodge. For action is requesting the council approval to submit an application to the Illinois Preservation Agency for funding to resurvey, survey the city's Lakeshore Historic District. Request action for approval of a one-year extension of the expiration of the 631 through 749 Chicago Avenue Amly Approved Plan Development. This would extend it to December 8, 2010, to obtain a building permit. Then we have Ordinance 103009, which enacts a new section of the city code related to registration of rental residential buildings. Under Human Services, we have Evanston Township, October 2009 bills list in the amount of $100,753.68. From other, you want the bills list off, Alderman? Okay, the committee chair of Human Services Committee will address that later. Next, under Other Committees, facade improvement, financial assistance for the mechanical group. This is a plumbing company, and we're approving $32,000 for a share of his facade improvement, and this is from the Economic Development Fund. Madam Mayor, there are no other appointments and no other matters.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Did you make a motion, Alderman Rainey?
No, but I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
The consent agenda passes, nine votes to zero. Alderman Rainey, could we have a report from Administration and Public Works?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Alderman Wilson requested that A6 be removed from the consent agenda, and that is Resolution 73R09, which authorizes the city manager to execute a local agency agreement and construction engineering services agreement for the Evanston Lakefront Corridor Reconstruction Project. On your desk tonight were some additional responses to questions posed during the day. I'm not sure if everybody saw those, having to do with this item. So anyway, Madam Mayor, I move approval. I could have a second, then there could be a discussion.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I just have, I have some strong reservations about the amount of our contribution to the project. I realize this goes back to 2007, before I was, before I was here, but my expectation was that we were going to be coming in at about 20%. That was the, my understanding is that was the minimum amount that we would have to contribute to the project in order to get the grant money. And, you know, now we're looking at over $700,000. And, you know, I understand that there are I.DOT regulations, I.DOT restrictions, I.DOT requirements, and, you know, I lack confidence in, I love my state, but perhaps I lack some confidence in, in whether or not any of these state requirements are things that are absolutely necessary to get the bike path constructed. I think my expectation originally was also that this would include at least a portion of the pedestrian paths, and I think this is limited to the bike paths themselves. So, close to $2 million for the bike path seems like a number that's pretty high, particularly, particularly in view of the fact that my expectation was we were going to be putting in about 20%, and, and to the contrary, it looks like we're putting in close to half of the funding. So, I don't know if other people have those same reservations, but I have some concerns about the extent that we're now going to be required to participate in order to get those funds. I, I just don't feel we're comfortable that $2 million is what it's realistically should cost to put the bike path in. I can understand the fact that someone may impose a lot of requirements on us that will require it or force it to cost $2 million, but I'm just not sure that that's the right thing.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Could we get a response from staff regarding what Alderman Wilson's expectation was, the 20%?
Good evening, guests. The original ITEP grant is an 80/20 match, 20% participation by the city of Evanston. The problem with that is that I.DOT places a lot of restrictions on what are eligible items for that grant. So there are a lot of things that we're planning on doing, lighting being the most significant one, that are not eligible items under their program, which is why that 20% all of a sudden jumps up to a much higher percentage on our part for participation. There's other items as well, most of the benches, trash receptacles. About the only thing they really qualify as a participating element are, besides the actual pathway itself, is the removal of the existing path, which is a significant cost, and then bike racks at certain locations. So everything else that we want to do as part of this project, which is much more than just asphalt on the ground, is not an eligible participating item in their 80/20 match.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
At committee level, I did vote yes, but, you know, please explain to me, Paul. So why did you bring it to us with this significant increase in terms of our participation? Given what you know already as to our budget constraint, and given that you knew that it was supposed to have been 80/20, and maybe, City Manager, you might want to help us out in terms of the rationale. I want to broaden this also. In the last two months, we've approved expenditures of close to $2.5 million for the lakefront. We have the Robert Crown Center that has been on our agenda for the longest as a, you know, where we need to spend some money. You know, what is it that moves this up as a priority so consistently? Why do we not get a sort of critical analysis that say, well, you know, we don't think this is the time to do this, or if it's not 50% or close to 50%, that we ought to know that or hear the explanation as opposed to waiting for us to have to inquire further before we get, you know, some feedback from you guys, some leadership?
Madam Mayor, Alderman Jean Baptiste, certainly, Paul can speak more specifically to this, but looking at the project background on the, the written document that's before you, this project began with council discussions back in fiscal year 2005, with initial grants being awarded in June of 2006, with additional discussion in '07, '08, '09. So this has been something that's been on the table for you for a number of years. I think one of the challenges your staff has, and I think this is a larger question, really points to Alderman Jean Baptiste's issue, is priority setting. And how does the council participate in priority setting on an annual basis to readjust priorities based on funding with capital projects? I think the council has identified as one of your goals that you want to do a better job of readjusting those priorities on an annual basis, and certainly if the council wishes to not move forward with this project, that makes sense, given finances. But it also makes sense that the council has set priorities and has approved capital budgets in these consecutive years. So from your staff's perspective, we're trying to implement the direction of the council. Again, the, the record over the course of almost four years with this project has been very integrative, and, and I certainly can't speak to that, but if the council wishes to hold the line on, on these capital projects that have been in the works for many years, your staff's certainly not going to object to that.
Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I would like Paul or Doug or both of you to give us an overview, and those who are listening, exactly what's going to happen with the $1,780,000. What, what are we going to see when the project's complete? We're not laughing at you, we're laughing at the water.
I understand. What you'll see at the end of this project is a new bike path that conforms to I.DOT specifications. It's significantly wider than the existing pathway. It will be, have a new, a new alignment that is in general closer to the street side of the park rather than the lake side of the park.
rather than the lake side of the park. It'll be lighting the entire length of this new path. And one of the reasons that was incorporated into this project and increased the scope is because it... From our perspective, it just doesn't make sense to put a new pathway in without the lights and then come in and have to tear up the same park again, putting in lights after the fact. We thought if we're going to put it all in, we should just do it once. In addition to the pathway with the lighting, there will be... Obviously, we will be removing the existing pathway, making some connections to the existing pedestrian path where we need to as a result of the realignment of the bike path. And this bike path stretches all the way from Lee Street to just north of Clark Street, where we come into the south end of Northwestern Campus. There'll be a significant amount of new benches, landscaping, trash receptacles, bike racks, other things that go along with biking.
Madam Mayor, may I ask one more question? If we were to just do the 80/20, we would get the new reconfigured bike path. Is that it?
That's correct, and some bike racks.
And some bike racks. So I would ask this council to please not dispose of this entire project because, you know, of the lighting or the benches. This is an important project.
I'd like to add something to Paul's comments and to the city manager's. As you know, we've been working on this project since 2005. The project went through a tremendous amount of public involvement. The lighting, as an example, was thoroughly vetted by the community, saying they didn't... They wanted to have a black sky. So the lighting that was selected points down and not out, so that when people are in the park, there's the security lighting or lighting for people to see. But it doesn't spread out. And as I indicated, this was adopted... This plan was adopted by the city council unanimously for us to proceed and provided the funding. And as you can see from the chronology in our write-up, each step of the way, we brought this back to the city council for consideration. So we've continued to, I think, keep the city council informed as to the progress of this overall project. One of the things that we wanted to also, or I want to point out, is over the last 40 or 50 years, we have done nothing at the lakefront. We have spent considerable amount of funds, and I did this in a presentation to the city council several months ago. We've spent considerable amount of funding on neighborhood parks over the last 10 or 12 years. And we have not addressed anything at the lakefront. And in conjunction with the visioning and the master plan process with the city council, we collectively had made the decision it was time to do something at the lakefront and start focusing over there, which we had abandoned for the last 40 or 50 years.
Alderman Nguyen?
Well, Mr. Gaynor raised a point that I wanted to make about the lighting issue. For those of you who may not have participated in the lakefront master plan, one of the issues that came up was lighting. And there is this new concept of the dark sky, so that you don't have light bleeding into the surrounding community. You don't have light spreading out. But what you have is adequate light for the needs within the park and that it doesn't glow out into the neighboring community. It's a new concept, and not that new, but it's one of those innovative concepts that we should implement here in Evanston. I do think that we have talked about this lakefront plan to improve the path for... Since 2005, it's been under discussion. We did a 10-month lakefront master planning process. If anyone was out over the weekend, there were thousands of people along the lakefront, all the way till sunset and afterwards. I regularly get calls, I know other lakefront Aldermen probably do too, when there are enormous puddles along the path and you can't get through, or there's ice or other things that happen in the park that make the one thing that you... Where you should be able to have recreation all year round impossible. And so I do appreciate that this is a large... This is a big number. I do think, though, when a path isn't simply just asphalt, which is what we've been doing over the years, is we just put asphalt down. And then, within a season or two, it's not asphalt anymore, it's just cinder. I had an email from a constituent of mine who asked about how... What the breakdown is, and I didn't bring it tonight, as to the cost per foot. And I sent it on to Parks and Recreation and asked them to come back and give an analysis. And it was very detailed in terms of a bike path is not quite like paving a road, but it... There are many, many layers to it. There's drainage that's involved, which is what we don't have right now and what is continuously causing problems. There was the surveying, all of the things that you have to do. And what we're trying to do here is build a bike path that will last us. You know, it's the type of thing that we've been talking about, so that we build good quality infrastructure that doesn't need constant repair or isn't in such a sorry state that we're embarrassed about it. You know, when I get calls from people saying, "Why is the path a mess again?" I don't really have a good answer, except that we're applying for money for it. I would also like to point out that the staff had applied for and been awarded... Our city staff has applied for, and we've been awarded $1.2 million in grants for this. And without that money, we really wouldn't be able to do any of this. But I recognize that this is a large amount of money. I don't think we should abandon this project. It's something that everyone in Evanston uses, enjoys. It has been left undone or simply patched over and over again, while we have addressed, I think it was 28 neighborhood parks that we figured out. I completely agree with Alderman Jean Baptiste that Robert Crown is sitting there waiting for us to start working on it. But Robert Crown is a very big-dollar amount project and much, much larger than the lakefront path. And we do need to find a solution to it, because that also serves everyone in our community. So I urge the fellow members of the council to move forward with this. The lakefront is our largest recreational area. And people come and use it for as many reasons as you can think of. Just, you know, we've all been out there. Many of us use it on a regular basis or just occasionally. And it's now used year-round, really. You know, people have learned to run with cleats on. That's not me. It's probably Alderman Wilson. Or snow tires on his bike. So I recognize that this is... This is a big expenditure, but this is a large project. And it is something that we have been working on and telling the community that we're going to get to for a very long time. And we have $1.2 million here of grant money. And, you know, this is a wise use of our money for a capital asset that is heavily, heavily used by everyone here in the community. So I urge that we not abandon this and that we approve the project.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think in wonderful economic times, I would be happy to see the... All of the improvements at the lakefront move forward. But I think, under the circumstances, most of you know that I've been very concerned about the money that we're spending on the lakefront as compared to other needs that we have, specifically at Robert Crown, which I think is in desperate condition for... Or desperate need for money. I'm going to support Alderman Rainey's suggestion of the 80/20. I think that's a... Was that... I'm sorry, was that yours, Alderman Rainey? Okay, I think actually that's a wonderful suggestion. So I will take credit for that suggestion. But I'll give you a footnote on that. But I do think that that is... That is a good thing for us to do. I am a little bit concerned about the lighting and whether we're encouraging, actually, bicycle traffic in the evening. I'm going to defer to Alderman Nguyen's knowledge that this was discussed at... During the lakefront planning process that I did participate in, but don't remember this. So I think that that is a good way for us to move forward. I thank Alderman Wilson for investigating and bringing this to our attention. And that's what I would support at this time.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. My impression is that the bike path... This isn't really transportation for people getting to and from work or things of that nature. My impression is, just from using it a lot, that this is recreational use, for the most part. So I guess one of the things I wonder is if we really... And I understand if we do the lighting later, we do something like that later, it's going to cost more, it's going to be an imposition on the park, you're going to have to dig it up again. But I'm going to feel a lot more comfortable if we can knock half a million dollars off of this and get into that, you know, 80/20 ratio, because that's money that we could be using for something else or, you know, cutting into this deficit. And it's a reasonably big chunk of cutting into the deficit. So if we take these other items out that fall outside the scope of what IDOT will contribute towards, will that bring us closer to the 80/20? It's a question, sorry.
We actually will have to discuss this with IDOT to see what they will and will not permit.
Okay.
You know, we've taken it this far. We know we have approvals to this point on what we have in the project. To get it to 80/20, I'm not sure how much they're willing to provide for what they will approve. Do we have $1 million, as an example, worth of paving? And what it gets to do if we just do the paving, which is maybe one of the suggestions?
Okay.
So we need to actually talk with IDOT and try to figure out if that's even something they'll approve.
Okay, because that's... I will feel much more comfortable with that. You know, I agree with Alderman Nguyen. I think it's important that we get this path done. It's dangerous for a lot of people. Again, I use it a lot. I, you know, wear my cross-country shoes and I'm careful. And you can't use it in the winter. And it is an imposition to a lot of people who would like to use that, you know, fantastic feature of our community. But, you know, that $700,000 number is just too troubling for me right now.
Thank you. I know there are several other people who want to speak.
Never mind.
You're not calling the question, all right. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Tendem? And I would remind you, we have spent quite a bit of time on this.
I'll make this quick. I support the amendment or the proposal to go ahead with the project, especially with the lighting. I think it's laying a foundation for the lakefront, a commitment to the lakefront that's come a long, long way in a rather long time. And I think that, most of all, we have the discussion of the lakefront coming up. At that point, we can decide what further we go and where our priorities are then. But I think this is the first step in kind of laying the foundation. And we should go ahead as planned.
Thank you, Alderman Tendem. Alderman Nguyen?
I pass.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
I voted for this at the committee level, and I will still vote for it. But what I'm going to ask you guys to remember is that a year and a half ago or so, when we started talking about the economic potential... The economic potential of the lakefront to the city, a bunch of people basically took a position over my dead body, that they were not going to allow anything to go on at the lakefront. They would generate some revenue to the city. As we invest all of this money... Remember, by the way, what time does the lakefront close?
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock? Okay, because I know that...
But cars can't park after 9:00.
Cannot park after 9:00? Okay. Yeah. So for the most part, if you don't live in the neighborhood, you can't really use it.
That's correct.
That's one of the things that happens.
But we have to change that.
I understand that. I'm just saying that we have to understand, okay, that there is, in my view, an approach to the lakefront as if it is, it belongs to folks who live on the lakefront. And as we talk about the future of the city, we have to be able to use all of our assets. And, you know, investing and making each asset better, that's great. I support that. But we have to be equitable. And we have to think about the entire community. To have restricted parking is strategic. It's a question of, you know, minimizing the use. And I could see it now from a helicopter. It's going to look really beautiful, the lighting. But at the same time, you're not going to have users. You have few users who, you know, live in the neighborhood, but you're not going to have the kind of use that would have the participation of all of the citizens of the city. So as we move forward, you know, let's not... Let's keep long memory as to how we use the lakefront versus what we invest there.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
I'm going to support it in terms of keeping the lighting, simply because, I don't know if you heard what Paul said, but if we're going to do... If we're going to build the path now and then later dig it up and put in lights, which we've been... If you've watched around the city sometimes, we'll see streets being paved. And then later, you'll see somebody coming back and digging it up to put something else there. So it's a waste... To me, it's a waste. I think, though, that since I've been on the council and when things have come up for the lakefront, I have voted for it because I do see the potential of more benefits for the overall community. It does belong to everyone. And I think that if we have rules that are keeping other folk out, then those rules have to be changed. And I think that that's a discussion that we have to have. And I'm certainly willing to have that discussion. So, and in terms of opportunities for revenue and also more activities that will benefit the whole community. So that's where my vote is coming from.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
I too am in support of this project moving forward, as is.
I too am in support of this project moving forward as is, and I want to echo Alderman Holmes and Alderman Jean Baptiste about, my ward doesn't have a lakefront, but we need to be able to have more people from around Evanston be at the lakefront. I think the parking definitely should change to accommodate that and having the bike, like, the bike path lighted will be very helpful and encourage more people to come down. Also, I think Alderman Wynn, your comments about the big puddles and people, it's hard for people to rollerblade on there, not that many people do that anymore, but that if we have a path that's more accessible to people, I think that'll be good for all of Evanston, not just the people that live on the lakefront. Thanks.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is getting really confused. This discussion is clearly a discussion that we probably should be having when we're talking about the use of the lakefront as one of the city priorities. And I'm not sure City Manager Wynn, that is going to be scheduled?
Next week.
Okay, that's next week, okay. I guess I would suggest to everyone, because a number of Aldermen have been talking about how this represents to them, an increased use of the lakefront, increased accessibility, increased parking. I would prefer that we put off the vote on this, and I don't know whether that's possible, until we're actually having the lakefront discussion, because I do think that there are some differing opinions on how we're going to be using the lakefront. So I'm just going to put that out as a suggestion and see where that goes.
Is that a motion?
Okay.
Well, I guess first what I'd like to know, is that possible? Is there something driving the vote tonight that if we delay the vote tonight, that's going to be, create a problem?
We have to have something in IDOT's hands by the end of this month.
Alderman Wynn.
I'd like to call the question.
Wait, I'm...
She's moving.
Yeah.
She still has the floor.
Yes, I do, thank you very much.
Alderman Fisk does have the floor.
I thought you sat down.
Well, I was trying to be deferential. Since this isn't, this is not urgent that we do this tonight, I think it would be better that we make this part of the discussion on the lakefront. And so I move that we hold this vote until at the time when we have a city council meeting discussing the lakefront.
Second, I'd be willing to hold.
Okay, Alderman Wynn.
Call the question.
I move to overrule.
Second.
Whoa. All right, this is the one time I left the council rules in my desk. Because it looked like such a simple meeting in part.
It never is in this.
All right, it's been, let me go through the chronology.
Let's get Legals.
I called the question on the motion to delay.
I beg your pardon?
A minute.
Elke.
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 We don't vote on that. A motion to hold.
You just hold.
It wasn't a motion to hold.
It was.
No, it was.
It was to hold it over. She said I moved to hold it.
She moved to hold.
I moved to hold it. To the next meeting.
And Lionel seconded it.
All right, then I misheard it. I withdraw my...
Okay. So then to Elke, are we voting on a motion to hold or does it...
Yes.
All right. Before us is a motion to hold until, Judy, did you say the next?
Next meeting.
Until the next meeting.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, when do you remember, in all your years on this council, voting on a motion to hold over?
Okay.
I thought it's automatic.
It's automatic.
It's automatic.
Then we'll hold it till the next meeting.
No, we, there's a motion to overrule the holdover.
All right, that's Alderman Burris.
Alderman Burris.
And I seconded it.
That's what you seconded, okay, I'm sorry.
And that's debatable. That's debatable. Motion overrule.
All right, does anyone wish to debate it?
I'd move to call the question.
Get on with it.
All right, this is a roll call vote because it is money.
No, this is a motion to overrule the hold.
Oh, okay, the motion to overrule the hold, all in favor.
Roll call.
I think you need to do a roll call because it's two-thirds, I believe.
It is.
Two-thirds? Two-thirds?
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Hold on one second. Let me just, this is the motion to overrule, right?
Yes.
No. No to overrule.
Alderman Wynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Yes.
Alderman Tendem?
Yes.
Alderman Grover?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Burris?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
There are six ayes and three nays, the motion passes.
Now, can I call the vote?
Yep.
Yes. All right, City Clerk, when you're ready.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. You're doing fine.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
What is it?
This is to agree with the...
This is the main motion.
All right, I'm going to vote aye for the reasons I stated.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Seven to two.
Motion passes seven to two.
Okay.
Next, Alderman Rainey.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is just on principle. I move introduction of ordinance 109, O-09, the 2009 Evanston Township Tax Levy. This is just for introduction.
Second.
There's a second?
Urging everybody to vote.
Thank you.
I think you have to say all in favor.
Well, we need, it's an ordinance.
Okay, roll call.
You have to have a roll call.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Eight to one.
Motion passes eight to one. Alderman Wynn, you don't have anything from planning and development. Alderman Jean Baptiste, Human Services?
Yes, move approval of the township bills, October 2009 bills.
Second.
I had taken it off the consent because at committee level, we also received the audit and financial report simultaneously. And so I was concerned that that was not included in here, whether it is intended to be submitted as well. Sorry. Yeah, is it intended to be included at some point? Because I had some concerns. Yes.
Alderman Jean Baptiste, you're referring to the annual audit?
Annual audit and financial report.
And that's going to be submitted for next council meeting on the 23rd.
Okay. There was a rule that I, a rule that I was trying to get clarification, I would now just ask Marty Lyons to please look into that. The auditor also was responsible to, for the financial report. And so my understanding is that there's a conflict of interest, okay? Also did the financial report.
That is the audit.
Yes. And my understanding is that you cannot do that. So I thought that was included in here, or there was an oversight. Next time, we'll consider that, so that's all.
So approval of the bills has been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Nine to nothing.
Motion passes nine to nothing. Alderman Rainey?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I'm very sorry. I mentioned that I was going to discuss the minutes of the last council meeting.
Oh, that's right, you did.
So I'm going to do that now. I am going to ask the council to hold the minutes of the last council meeting until our next meeting so that I can discuss them with the clerk who's not here tonight, because I have some very serious problems with them.
Second.
And I think, I don't think there's a problem with that, is there?
No.
No.
And I would ask Alderman Rainey if everybody could take a closer look at the minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
Because with that...
So that's what I'm asking you, to please take a look at these minutes and you'll...
Yeah, because one of the things, sorry, that's, in the minutes is that we approved the peddlers' ordinance unanimously.
Right.
So I don't, we don't know where that came from, so...
We did not approve that.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you for noticing that. All right, next we have call of the wards. Alderman Jean Baptiste.
The only report I wanted to make is to reiterate, I guess, my position on the initiatives of the city manager, and I really appreciate, you know, you're moving real fast and you're giving us a lot more work to do, as Alderman Rainey has been saying, besides what we have to do on our own. But I think that we have to, you know, really try to build on whatever it is that was here. And I'm not saying that, I mean, because your approach sometimes seems to imply that there was nothing here. And so there may not have been in certain areas, but I think it's important to take into consideration whatever thoughts and ideas and plans have been put in place so that we could build on whatever we have, whether it's economic development, whether it is housing, affordable housing. And the lakefront, let's look at the notes from previous discussions. And the other matter is that, you know, when we start looking at the many different entities that are involved in so many of the different substantive areas, I mean, we lack centralization. And so it's really important that we wrap our arms around those things that we say we're doing so that we get a sense of the resources, both staff and human and financial. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I wanted to let the audience know out there that we are all wearing these flag pins, and if you can see them on our lapel. I wanted to just provide an explanation because I think someone will email one of us to say, why were you all wearing those pins? We're wearing them in honor of Officer Patrick Wozniak of the Evanston Police Department. He is the married father of four and he was recently deployed, redeployed to Iraq for the third time under Operation Iraqi Freedom. And the proceeds of the sale of these pins will aid us in the support of his family during his deployment. And we have been asked to wear these pins for the next year while he is deployed in Iraq. So that's for the information of everyone out there. Following up an earlier request, I did want to say thank you to the staff, to Yvonne DeThomas's staff. I received an email from someone who's a friend of mine, but she is also a very active Lincoln School parent. They were the, one of the schools that had the first day of the H1N1 vaccinations take place. And the, my Lincoln School friend parent, I'm a former Lincoln School parent, just sang the praises of the staff, that the whole thing, the whole process went seamlessly despite an ambulance, a fire alarm, and vomit. So I don't know the details of that, but I just want to give a shout out to our staff and say that for something that we have never done before, that this went very, very well. And Lincoln is a wonderful elementary school and thank you very much for a terrific process. I'm not sure I'm going to volunteer at Nichols though, for theirs. I was considering it. I want to get to the bottom of the story before I do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Guess I'm just going to make a reminder to everyone. I continue to be surprised at the number of the reports on the daily crime reports that come out indicating that there have been burglaries or thefts to unsecured properties. So lock your doors, lock your cars, and lock your garages because if it's not locked, you're an easy target, or at least much easier target. Also, I want to thank all the people in the community who are making those calls and reporting things that they observe. And keep that up because that's how we catch people and that's how we get these things under control. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
I would like to thank again the task force, the Affordable Housing Task Force that was commissioned by the Housing Commission, and especially the leadership of Susan Monroe because it was a really great committee. And I hope, if you haven't read it, that you will all read the report. I'd also like to thank one of the citizens in the 5th Ward who Alderman Wilson just talked about observing and watching in your neighborhood. But it was a really interesting, actually the first time I've ever had anything happen like this, where a resident called because they saw a landscaping company taking water out of a fire hydrant and called to find out why. It turned out, it was a good call because their permit had expired. So the company did go in the next day and pay their bill. So to all you citizens out there, when you see something, call because it may not be as it appears to be. So we certainly want to thank that resident for bringing that to our attention. And then just to let you know that you're invited to join us on this, next Thursday evening for the regular 5th Ward meeting, the 19th at 7:00 at Fleetwood. And we also have a meeting on the 18th of the Fireman Park Neighbors here at the Civic Center. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd also like to suggest that the first 90-day report was quite amazing and you've truly immersed yourself in the city in 90 days more than I thought anyone possibly could. So thank you for that and thank you for the report. I'd like to take a moment to, or just this time to refer the issue of one-sided parking during snow emergencies or snow, at least snow removal times. There have been issues, I'd like to refer that to AMPW, to discuss some alternatives for those streets that are very tight with parking and at that point of a large snow or anticipated large snow, they really don't have access to an alley or other parking. So special consideration for that. I know it happens in the 6th Ward and it happens in probably every ward in this community. There are those certain situations that I think we could take a second look at and give people some suggestions or sort of compensate for that situation. I'd like to participate in the process and I certainly would be eager to meet with staff prior to it so to explain where I'm coming from with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My first is to, again, thank the Affordable Housing Task Force and the extraordinary work of Susan Monroe in leading that effort. I want to thank Northwestern University and the four law enforcement agencies that on Halloween worked to ensure the safety of both trick-or-treaters and fans in North Evanston during the overlap of the Penn State football game and trick-or-treating. By all accounts, it went very well. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, thank you for reminding me, Alderman Grover, because Brummel Park Neighbors did a fantastic job on their anti-egg campaign for Halloween and only evidence of eggs on one sidewalk and a empty carton from Aldi's because they have ways of identifying egg cartons in Brummel Park. And it was from Aldi's. Next, I'd like to make a reference to, make a reference, I think, to traffic engineering on taking a look at how we do passenger vehicle only and who we exclude from those districts. I'm very sensitive to Alderman Burris's issue and I know that we've had a report from legal. But when I look at some of these little pickup trucks that people have, who have apps, some, even some lawyers have little pickup trucks that they use for their personal vehicle. And they are frequently licensed evidently as B licenses, which are not allowed in passenger vehicle only blocks. And also vans, people have vans. And I'm talking about unmarked vehicles. In other words, not a vehicle with, you know, Joe's Plumbing all over it or Carpentry or anything else, but just plain vehicles that happen to have the wrong kind of license plate. There has to be a way for us to figure out how our residents who pay big taxes and put a lot of money into their vehicle sticker, that they can be allowed to park near their house on a public street. And I also agree with Alderman Tendem, the one-sided street parking, snow removal, and street cleaning, as a matter of fact, is a difficult problem in our town. And one of the problems is, we've always, those of us who are not professionals think, why can't people just move to the other side of the street? But there's, there's no parking on the other side of the street. So what seems to be a very natural solution, you know, today, everybody moves to the no parking side. But there are evidently traffic engineering reasons why we've been stonewalled on that. And then on Wednesday night at the Levy Center at 6:30, there will be a meeting in the 8th Ward to renovate a park at Brummel and Richmond. Thank you. Oh, and congratulations on Mayor Morton for naming the Civic Center after her.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just for clarification from Alderman Rainey on the issue of the vehicles, would you like a report to come back to AMPW?
Well, whatever, there's, I read all of Alderman Burris's legal opinions, et cetera. And I'm very sensitive to people not wanting junk trucks and plumbing trucks and rotor-ruder trucks parked in front of their house. But I'm not sensitive at all to those people who have a van or who have a pickup truck, who have no, they're entitled to park on their block, I would think. And I want us to figure out a way, I know with you as city manager, we can do that. We can figure out a way to allow people to park their private vehicle in front of their house.
So you'd like that, solutions to come back to the council? Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
Just a clarification, it wasn't my legal opinion, it was staff's. Wally, I really appreciate your hard work and thoughtfulness on the 90-day report. I've consistently heard positive responses about your leadership over the past few months, both inside and outside of City Hall, so thank you. Thanks to the Affordable Housing Task Force for a thorough document, unbelievably impressive, you know, especially in this economic hard time. I also want to thank all the 9th Ward... I also want to thank all the Ninth Ward residents who attended the budget meeting this past Saturday. It was very well attended for 8:30 on a Saturday morning, there were around 70 people, I believe, so that was, that was pretty great. The next budget meeting is this Thursday at Robert Crown, I believe it starts at 7:00, correct? And then finally, the Ninth Ward Town Hall meeting is Thursday, November 19th, and we will have a cast of thousands presenting. Probably the most exciting person presenting is Marty Lyons. He'll be talking about the tax bill and the budget process, so please come out. We'll also be talking about pedestrian safety and crosswalks, as well as library resources available for the unemployed, and we'll also be hearing from Erica Barton of the Police Department about restorative justice. So please come out, we'll also have punching cookies. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few things to say. First of all, my very favorite Halloween costume, with due respect to all of the employees that participated, was to Marty Lyons, who decided to go fishing during the budget season, which I thought, well, we all should go and do that. Secondly, I want to thank the city manager. I have been watching city council meetings for a long time, and I cannot remember a city manager preparing a report like you did tonight. And it was very helpful. It will be very helpful as our discussions go forward. I want to thank and congratulate Lorraine Morton tonight for just fabulous dedication. The mayor looked so happy, it was wonderful to see her, and it was just a great evening, and the rain held off until we were all just right-headed back into the Civic Center. On a more serious note, I do want to share with you, on the council, an issue that's important to the neighborhood at the north end of the First Ward. On the 15th of September, a application was filed with the City of Evanston Health Department to establish a type-one restaurant in the T1 Transitional Campus Zone that borders the R1 residential property on Ourington Avenue. This is a type-one restaurant that is operating, actually more like a type-two restaurant, in the Seaberry Dormitory, again, that borders the R1 zone. The neighborhood did not know about this. We had an NU City Committee meeting, which is appropriate for this type of topic, it was not mentioned at this meeting, unfortunately. The neighbors first found out about this about a week ago, when yard signs appeared in the city parkway on Sheridan Road, shocking everyone, and directing passersby that they could go and find food at the Seaberry Great Hall. Since then, neighbors have asked questions, they indicated to me that was there anything that they could do? They just determined that they could file an appeal to what was actually an oral interpretation by the zoning administrator to the Health Department. They have gone ahead and filed that appeal. Tomorrow, my understanding is that they're also going to file a complaint. I hate to see something like this happen, we've worked very hard to establish open communication in the First Ward, especially with the university. The applicant was actually Sedesco America LLC, and not the university, so that, that made things just even a little bit more problematic. This is a, it is not a permitted use in T1, it is not a special use in T1, it is not allowed in T1. And it is incumbent upon the applicant to demonstrate that this use, with hours from 5:00 PM to 2:00 AM, actually existed prior to the passage of the 1993 zoning ordinance. As I said, the neighborhood close to the use has filed an appeal. That will be determined whether that file is complete and go on to ZBA. Unfortunately, the people who, family who filed the appeal called and asked me, because it mentioned on the application that there was a cost to file the appeal, and a fee, and asked me what that fee was, I did not know. It said it was established by the city council and could be changed from time to time. I did inquire of the zoning administrator, who informed me that the fee was $100. When the wife of the couple came to the Civic Center to actually turn in the appeal and pay the fee, she was told it was $250. That that fee, the additional $150, according to her, was to cover the cost of transcription of the meeting. I want to refer that cost on to the appropriate department, so that persons, especially our citizens, who have a basis for disagreeing with a zoning administrator's decision, can actually ask those questions without incurring a $250 cost. So this is a troublesome time, but this is a neighborhood that has been very invested in its zoning. It's a neighborhood who exists peacefully and happily with the university, but also is aware that the T1 zone is there for a purpose, and that is to protect the residents of the R1 zone and their property values, and the property tax that we receive from them, based on the integrity of that neighborhood. So I would, again, I just wanted to share that with you, it's a very serious concern, and as it moves forward, I will keep you informed of it. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comments. Alderman Wilson, I believe you have your light on.
I do. I move to, I was going to make a... Move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss matters of personnel and minutes pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120 slash 2, subpart C, 1 and 21.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, roll call, city clerk. You are correct. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman, when?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Nine. The motion passes. That's the first thing I've heard they're going for.